We will start with the pleasure of leaving this question for us to the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Today is May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three work session. This meeting is being recorded. If you have any cell phones, please put them on silent. And Ms. Leslie, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
You can go. Um, we have an addition of OHA agreement one seven zero seven one three dash one and community justice lease agreement with Warner Mountain Properties. And we have one deletion of Lake County vehicle use policy.
Okay. Um, first item of our business is Dave.
Yes.
Ten years. Ten year pin, uh, ten years of service for working for the county. Want to congratulate you on excellent work that you've done throughout those years and many, many, many more to come.
Thank you.
So if you don't mind, come on up.
Thank you.
Awesome job.
Congratulations, Dave.
Well, if I may, just some takeaways from Dave, from Dave. Oh. I got six months on Dave. And his first day, he couldn't get in the building because he showed up early and I just happened to be in Jay's office downstairs. So Dave had to call Jay to get in. So Jay went up and let him in the back door and he came down. And since then, the courthouse has done an about-face from the grass to the cut, to the paint of the building, to consistency, to the, to this. Dave's done remarkable work. He's been a great partner. He supports our work crew and everything we do. We work collectively often, a lot. And, uh, his emails, he still types like caveman. And I'd like to point that out. That's our jabbing back and forth. But all in all, Dave has done nothing but provide great representation for the county in all areas, from railroad, airport, the parks. You name it. Dave's name is attached to it. So thank you, Dave. Thank you very much.
Seems like longer than ten years. I know. Anybody else? All right. Well, we tried to embarrass him enough.
Well, thank you.
Thanks again for your service, Dave. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We all have a timed item here at ten o'clock on Fort Rock Highway safety setting project. But we've got lots of other business to do and we'll start off online with Mr. Shane Coyle from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife or U.S. Fish and Game. Morning, Shane, how are you?
Good. How you guys doing?
Good, good. Shane's here to talk to us today about predator control staffing for Lake County.
So a few months ago, we currently put a financial agreement in place. We put in one back ticket signed by everybody at the institution. And for twenty thousand dollars, we were able to put aides out in most of the locations, Lakeview, A D L, um, Paly, um, I don't know, kind of just everybody that Jason made or helped, helped us organize. And we were able to get three flights in this year on the range we were hoping, um, that we were able to get free. We moved just about a hundred coyotes, so three flights. Yeah, we're kind of just, um, filling in short notice and trying to be guys who learn the counties to go down and, and help out when possible. So looking to the future, you know, next year, we could do that agreement again for twenty thousand. And we'll try to take care of ravens and flying from the predators. But I also sent a proposal for the commission to ask for fifty thousand for next year in hopes that we could put a full-time person in the county. And this would be the lowest amount we could see for a full-time person. That person would also be working the Heart Mountain Big Horn sheep project as well. So sixty thousand, let's take your whole time person, it's a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand. I anticipate the person, we've been on the right person to take care of the problems around the county, but then also use my means to cover the Heart Mountain project to hopefully fund that for the year. So that's, that's why I'm on today, like it's been a proposal for a thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you, Shane. Uh, do you have any questions, James?
So is the letter of commitment or the commitment of dollars from the county, the full sixty thousand or a portion thereof?
I've, um, asked the idea of getting along.
So are you, are, so your proposed budget request for the next fiscal year is sixty thousand? Are you asking for a full sixty thousand from the county, I guess?
Yes, correct. Um, as we, uh, in other counties, we have a cost share program going. That's a little bit, cost share program is a little uneasy right now with the current governor's budget. I'm not sure what that's going to look like next year and how much we'd cost share with the county. But we anticipate we will be able to cost share with the county in the future, but it doesn't really take us back until the county's been involved for, for a year. And then, then take the back to the next year, the cost share program. And the cost share program in other counties has been about a third of the cost. So you know, twenty thousand or less would be what you could expect in future years if you gave sixty thousand. Assuming the governor's budget gets restored to what we had previously.
Shane, the, uh, Heart Mountain project, um, to protect the Big Horn sheep. Isn't that kind of a limited, uh, project as well? Would, would that money run out at some point?
It would, you know, I, I think they're going to do it for five years at least, within five years. It's just a yes. But yeah, you, this would not be forever. It's just a, a short term. But some way to try to help you guys get into game, you know, for now.
Right. Molly?
Shane, would Lake County be eligible for the cost share program if we only maintained our twenty thousand dollar contract?
Yeah, yeah. And if we can get the, the government budget restored, we can still cost share on the twenty thousand. So a third of that.
So if we go up, will there be more services? Like if we went up to forty, would it go up incrementally in the cost share allocation?
So yes, if, if the cost share will go up or if the services?
Well, just like the service that we would get from that cost share program. So, um, I know our funds are limited, but if we went up thirty from twenty to thirty or just forty, would we see more services on the ground when we are eligible for the cost share program?
Yeah, but whenever a dollar gets added, there's more service available. But the limiting factor is, um, not having a dedicated person for it. I mean, we could have put out more aides this year and even set some coyote traps if we would have staff, you know, dedicated to the job. So that's, that's why I'm proposing the sixty thousand, that they will be hired full-time person. Um, if you want to stay at the twenty thousand or try to go to thirty thousand, um, I could try to hire a, you know, a part-time person for the county. And that would help, that would be better than what we're currently doing. Um, we're just up against finding the right person that's available, you know, twenty-four seven, at the drop of a hat, if there are other requirements. But if it's doable, I've done it other places. If it is doable, I'll be finding that person. But it's normally not as easy as, you know, offering somebody a full-time position.
Good.
I mean, I, I think there's a lot of utility in the program. I think I want to try and help support it the best we can, but we got to stay within our means. Right now, I don't see how we can possibly sustain, um, more than maybe thirty. But I'd like to stay with the twenty for now. Wait and see how the reauthorization is going to go with the governor's office in the state and in terms, terms of funding there. But I, I mean, just our funds are so limited right now. I don't think we could sustain much more of a hit, especially sixty thousand for a full-time position. I think we're just going to have to focus on that part-time work if we can. And that's, that's what I'm seeing.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Williams. Um, we just went through our budget process, Shane, and it wasn't very fun. Times are tight and it's going to be even tighter next year. So, um, we're going to do everything we can to help, or, you know, help folks who are having predator problems. But I think that twenty to thirty thousand dollar range is, is basically all we can afford at this time.
Yeah.
So, but I do appreciate you, uh, coming forward with this opportunity for us and, uh, if something comes to light or we happen to, something changes, we know how to get ahold of you, so.
Yeah, I will, if, I, when is your budget finalized?
Well, middle of June or not.
Middle of June.
Okay. Let, let me circle back about that point. And then if you, when this will be finalized, you've got twenty thousand or thirty thousand, whatever in there. At that point, then I will start the process of trying to find, um, staff to, to work that area, you know, ready for the future. So that, that's my goal, is to try to find, find an employee for you guys. And try to figure out the money before I start down finding the employees. So in a month's time, we can be, everybody solidified and also start that process.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Shane. Appreciate it.
All right. Have a good one.
All right.
Thank you, Shane.
Okay, next on the list is hiring freeze discussion. Imagine that, if we're just talking about that.
Well, um, I'm sure Jay might have some things to add here also. We've got a few department heads here today. We had some discussion back during budget assumptions that we would be implementing a hiring freeze. Or it was, I, I felt like there was consensus from the board that there wasn't going to be too many more hires. And if we were, we weren't saying an outright no, it was just that we really wanted there to be a discussion as to the necessity of roles that we would fill in the future. And I guess the way that was taken was business as usual, where if I have a budgeted line item or a budgeted position and someone steps out, I can fill that position for the rest of the year. And I guess that, that was not the intent and that wasn't what I took from the conversation. If someone steps out or a position comes up vacant, um, there's a discussion as to whether or not that position is necessary going forward. It might be very apparent that it is, in which case there shouldn't be that difficult to have a discussion. Or it might be something that we reevaluate because what I see in the budget, and I think what we saw during budget assumptions early on several months ago, was the real potential for heavy impact of the general fund and the potential for layoffs in the next several years. And to avoid that, we have got to reevaluate every element of our staffing. And so if we're going to fill positions, I just want there to be a discussion about it. And I kind of thought that was what was going to happen. So that's kind of why I wanted to bring it up today. I know Commissioner Albertson had some feelings on it too, about, he was, I believe, one of the original people who made several comments during the budget assumption process. But I'm, I was kind of curious to hear your thoughts on it also.
I did not hear the word, I don't recall hearing the words hiring freeze. But I totally agree with you that we should have a discussion every single time, um, there is a vacancy up and, and determine if there's any other route or, you know, maybe we delay the hiring or, or combine jobs or, you know, just look at all the options on the table. Maybe we need to be more clear as to what that discussion involves. Does that discussion involve, um, with the commissioners? Does it get brought before, before the commissioners in a work session and determine the needs or do we go straight? You know, I think people need direction.
Right.
As to how they fill the jobs.
Yeah, I think, uh, what I, I think the best course of action just from where I'm at is I, I feel like the departments need some direction on that. And if a department has a vacancy, there are several things to consider. One is when that position is now vacant or someone is leaving, you bring someone in to fill that role, you're going to have overlap. And that's going to result in additional cost to that budget line item of personnel that was not foreseen. So it's not as simple as simply saying, well, I was already budgeted for this. Well, you weren't budgeted for the overlap and the additional time that now you're going to be paying two people, you know, one person to be learning this job. So if people can, if the department heads can have a conversation with not only their liaison commissioner, but at least speak with all the commissioners and get ready. Maybe if it's, if there's general consensus to come before a meeting and we can, it's very, it's very clear, it shouldn't be that big of a problem. And, uh, it just needs to be something that I think we run before the, before the commissioners to where we can evaluate. Because it's our job, along with the treasurer's job and the budget officer, it falls back on us if we're not responsible with that budget. The public look at it and they say, well, you broke the county. You know, you ran over your budget. You know, by the end of August, we're at a negative, you know, in cash flow. They look at it and they see a lack of, um, responsibility that we're taking for our role. And we can take those hits, but it's, it's not fair for us to take those hits when no one even has a conversation with us. And that's what I'd like to avoid. I'd like to avoid any kind of hard feelings in the future going forward. Just, just come and talk to us. It's, there'd be no reason for us to even have a conversation about any kind of hiring freeze if it was just business as usual. So I, I don't feel like that conversation during budget assumptions was just to say, oh yeah, proceed.
Any input?
That makes it clear. Um, you know, even if it seems obvious, if you're still want to have that, I think that's the way to do it because then it takes that decision-making out of our hands, you know? So yeah, that'll, that'll work.
Yeah.
And this is for general fund, this is for all positions or?
I, I think it would be prudent to keep this within departments that are supported by general fund.
So if it's not general fund?
I mean, like for instance, I'll paint a scenario. Kevin Hawk with the road, uh, road department, limited staff. We, we've heard that during our budget process that they're at a skeleton rate. They're under the numbers that they have. And I've been kind of pushing on Kevin and, I mean, full transparency with the board. We've talked about this in the past. They'll get another position hired because it takes time to get these young kids, you know, up to a degree of, of capacity, capability and skill that, you know, they can be out there on their own and be working roads in a good manner. So fill those positions, get them filled and get them trained by some of the staff that we have that know what they're doing. Those are road dollars. They're not general fund. We have the dollars available to us and Kevin watches his budget very closely. If the will of the board is to include all departments, I, I, I don't know if I'm really stuck either way. But I think at the, at least, at the very least, we need to be very careful with the general fund. And I think it makes sense. Um, another, I hope you don't mind me putting you on the spot a little bit, Jake. Uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong or whack me and come to my office later and yell at me. But, uh, the, uh, you've always been very good about having that conversation. If you're looking to make changes in your department or there's changes coming up or, or, you know, coming forward in the future, you will come and talk to us individually, have that conversation and share with us, hey, this is what's potentially going to happen, this is what I plan to do, and this is how I plan to do it. That is very helpful for, for our position, from, from my standpoint. So I'd just like to see that same, um, care from other departments also. Absolutely. And, and not fill positions. I, I, what I don't like is to see new faces going past the hall and, you know, back and forth to HR and I have no idea who they are. And they're an employee and they've been working for us for, for a month or two and never even heard about it. Especially after what I believe we had had a conversation about, you know, in terms of being mindful of the new hires.
All right. So to be clear, um, any position that is funded out of general fund needs to have a commissioner discussion for, um, to seek approval before hiring during, during this time of uncertainty of our budget.
Even if the budget, if the position is already budgeted for.
Okay. Any questions?
Yep. I think just for the sake of conversation, so the board's aware individually and collectively. I think whether it's general fund dollars or special fund dollars, I think those conversations should still be had. But the depth of the conversations can be different. So, I mean, I, I have my community corrections squad. Um, we may or may not be looking to fill Sacks' position around the end of the year. I, I just don't want to have the ability just to hire someone and say, yeah, this is what I did because then what, what's the message to other department heads? And then there's going to be questions from the board. How, how are you paying for that? How's this going to work? What's, what's it, what, what back the past two years? So I, I think the depth of the conversations can be different, whether it's gen, supported by general fund or special funds. But at least just having that conversation so there's transparency amongst the board. And, and the board has a chance to weigh in individually or we bring it in here collectively.
Point well taken. Um, so I guess I would change my position there to where all, all vacant positions need to have a discussion with the liaison board commissioner and other commissioners before filling.
Correct. That's fair. Maybe.
Even a rehire position.
Yes, even rehire.
So I hope after, um, after you guys come to a jury, my consensus that you draft a statement that goes out to all your heads.
Yeah, that would help.
Okay. Is Commissioner Albertson going to be back in this week? Do we know?
Thursday.
Thursday. So if we could maybe draft, you know, a summary of Commissioner Shulenberger's words and to lay out what our clarity, lay out with more clarity, our position on this, have Commissioner Albertson review it and, uh, we can get that signed and whatnot and put it out there.
Okay.
That, that would be very, um, appreciated, especially on our end where we have to communicate with them and ask if they've talked to or got approval. It's nice to have that.
Right.
Them already done that.
So in the mean, in the interim, next few days, if Commissioner Shulberg and I can look at that, we can, if, if there's something, some changes that need to be made, that's fine. Commissioner Albertson can look at it. If he has, has a problem with it, um, we can have this conversation again, but, uh, I think for the time being, I think we're good to go. And then we'll get that out to the departments and to HR and everyone, so.
Good. Any other discussion?
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you guys being here for this.
Mr. Greer. Your amendment before us. So the first one, twenty-one dash C S dash a whole bunch of numbers, amendment. That's an amendment, that's intended amendment with the Forest Service for the work that we do, um, for the Forest Service. They've added, oh, just under a thousand bucks to it and then extended it from expiration of June thirtieth of twenty-three. They push it ahead an additional year, um, June thirtieth to twenty-four. The work we do, we build fence, we repair fence, we tear fence out, we clean up the campgrounds as far as the, the bathrooms. We don't go in and do a disinfectant, someone else does that. But we pick up the trash, we rake out the campsites, pick up some of the unburke wood and some of the trash left around the fire rings, kind of rake out the campsites a little bit. Just do some general upkeep, um, for Forest Service campgrounds. We don't, we're not, we're not out to make money on that. The cost that we, we do recoup, our paper, our fuel in and out of the forest and somewhere in there on our, our vehicles and our equipment. But, and we're fine with that because we have, we have work to do. We're, we're getting productive. Our work crews are big on the weekends. They're big on Mondays. We're, we're, we're active. Um, now's the time to be more active with the weather generally.
So this nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars in addition that's being added to the contract is largely just going to the travel line item?
Yeah, it's just travel.
Which makes sense.
I think you're paid so much per person on the crew and how much mileage we're traveling.
Right.
So it's just a little bit of the trip. It's a little bit of a trip.
Okay. So four bucks a gallon of fuel.
Four dollars, twenty-five cents.
It's not cheap to go anywhere.
Especially in a long time van pulling the trailer.
Yeah. It's about four feet to the gallon.
Something. Yeah, something.
All right, sounds good.
And then the community justice lease that Warner Mountain Properties. So I was before the board about a year ago. We entered into an agreement with the Fair Board to rent the house out of the mobile home, manufactured home there at the Fairgrounds for transition housing. It was a perfect location. It's worked out great for us. It's worked out great for the Fair Board. Unfortunately, at the beginning of April, they had a meeting, they about rolled their office space down there. So there are the point in time where they want to move into the house and use that as office space. Bigger conference room, larger room area. They'll have a kitchen where they can have lunches and do that kind of stuff for the meetings or dinners for the meetings. They also needed some onsite laundry, like somewhere to do onsite laundry for all the rags and mopeds and whatever else they need washed down there. Especially for the kitchen stuff. So, um, with that in mind and the fact that we do need transition housing, Rachel Frederick from my office reached out to Warner Mountain Properties to see if they had anything available that we could potentially lease. So they did their So they did their homework and they found two different properties, um, one on the south end and one on the other center street here. And, uh, we opted to go with the one right up Center Street, L, L Street. So it's just, you go up here, up Center Street to L, hang a left and we're like the, third house on the left.
Okay.
It's a two bedroom home, monitor heat, it's got washer dryer hookups, it's a nice quaint little home. Our, and we're gonna be making changes to our transition package because our current package outlines that when they're, when they're at the Fairgrounds, they owe ten hours community service work a week there at the Fairgrounds. We're gonna change that, we're gonna put that ten hours as a house, so they're raking up tree limbs, they're mowing the yard, they're doing some work around the house to, to keep it up.
Ten hours a week?
What's that?
Ten hours a month.
Two hours a day, essentially. If they go five days a week, it's not much to grab a rake, you go out.
Still, that house better look pretty good by the end of the week.
And then we have, so it covers, the, the cost is eight hundred and fifty bucks a month and that covers water and sewer. We'll be responsible for power, which is fine. Or the cost difference is about a hundred and fifty bucks a month, we were paying a thousand bucks a month at the Fairgrounds, we're paying eight fifty here a month. Garbage, our work crew stopped by every Monday and picked up the garbage at the house and took it out to the transfer site or brought it here depending on how much it was and put it in our dumpster. We'll still be doing that garbage pickup. We have beds, it's fully furnished, we're not gonna pay for table, we don't have a TV, but we have couches, kitchen appliances, dining room table, beds, bedding, washer and dryer. So the resident, so the folks living in the residence can, uh, do their own laundry. And when they exit, they can do the bedding, make the bed and put it back together. The house out at the Fairgrounds is, we worked out phenomenally, we got a big donation and Happy Horse, shut down some of the stuff that is on the yard sale, they gave us some coffee cups, some coffee, coffee maker to do different things, but we've picked up some necessary items, microwave.
Yeah.
That kind of stuff, so, um, washer dryer, so, um, it's a year-long lease and then, uh, with Warner Mountain being a year-long lease and after that it's another month.
Okay.
So, we wanted to make sure it was gonna be okay and wasn't in the capital of the neighborhood, which it shouldn't be because our folks are living in neighborhoods here in the community here. You've had, I wanna say five folks living there and the process is the first month's free, second month they pay a hundred and fifty bucks and the third month they pay a hundred and fifty bucks and then they're out. So that helps them, give them time to get out, get a job and, and engage in services and then save some money while also being accountable to some cost. Um, it's a mona- I believe it's a, it is a monitor heat, it's monitored heat there, so we'll have some fuel costs during the winter months, but we can build that.
So what people are eligible and what people are not eligible to be in this group?
At the Fairgrounds because it's kind of friendly down there, we did not allow, um, people with crimes against each other. So whether it be criminal mischievous, child abuse, sex offenders, uh, domestic violence, whatever the case is, they were not allowed out there. That said, now that we're in that community, um, and it's a stone's throw from the soccer field, high school soccer field down there, we're, we're, we're gonna take it look case by case, but we won't replace the sex offenders. Unless they're that far along where they're down there at the end of treatment and where they've got loose, they just need a hand up and get back on their feet because something life-changing happens, but sex offenders won't be allowed there.
Good. Then.
No children, um, are allowed there, so they're, they can't bring their kids into the home, they can't, uh, smoke inside. They gotta smoke outside, a lot of the guys need to smoke in there. No visitors, uh, they have curfews, they have chores to do around the house, their room, there's not supposed to be anything on the floor, they're supposed to sleep or not freely. Dishes should be stacked up and they seem, uh, there's a whole longer list of rules and things they can and can't do. And we hold them accountable for that.
Will you be installing cameras?
Um, her intent is to install cameras so we can verify curfew and verify who's coming and going all the time. And verify what's coming in and what's going out.
Good.
And you and I had a little conversation this morning, this is actually cheaper than it was at the Fairgrounds.
It is, but that would be additional cost because we're paying for power out, out at the Fairgrounds.
Right.
And that's electric heat out there, so we're gonna have, we'll have additional costs with, uh, just during the winter months for monitor oil.
Right.
And our power bill, so I know we see our power bill, we're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, you got about a hundred and fifty dollars per month less than it was out there, so, I mean, that should give you something to play with during the winter, during, uh, during the year.
Absolutely. And I'll budget more for that and we have different plots that we can draw from, if we have someone, um, that's involved with our drug court, our treatment court, we budget seventy dollars for those folks, separate from our two-two-nine, um, grant eight dollars that we set to that book, set, uh, budget set to you for. So we have a couple different plots we can draw from.
Right.
So, and I, I don't just budget for just that, set them out, I budget fracture because we're gonna have, people coming out of prison, whether they have crimes against children, whether they be sex offenders or batters, um, or folks that have, you know, crimes against children in general. We have, I'd find other places where, so we will, right now we have two female living out of the parents' house that will be moving into town. Excuse me. That will be moving into town. So, um, right now it's just a female house and we've had four or five female, um, living in the house since we took it over. And three of them have gone off and gotten their own places and doing very well. One's working on, did count the other one, we're working with. And we'll continue to work with it, so, we'll never combine male and female in the home, maybe a little hall, facilities will be all male or female. And if, if it works out, another house will obviously fit in that. If it works out, we may, and they come back before the board and ask about that, if that is a male house.
If there's a need, yeah.
If there's a need, well, we have a need, we just need to find a house and make sure I have the dollars to move forward.
Okay.
With that.
Thanks, Jake.
Appreciate it.
Think we'll skip over, uh, R H A agreements in a moment, Lily, you wanna talk I T service contract?
I do. So, it's almost time to renew our yearly service contract for I T services. I noticed when I was tabbing the page to sign potentially that the last, the date needed to be updated, so I have that on, updated on the official copy. The overall fiscal cost would be one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the year. And this does not include nine-one-one, Sheriff Taylor will bring that forward to you later from Germany. But it's just the time to consider how things are going, if you guys have any changes you'd like to see, um, updates. I think this is the best course of action for the county.
So, our current contract with, uh, ACTEC had expired.
It'll expire in July, or in the June.
In the June. And is this a raise from the current contract?
Same current, same cost as we, as currently have, yeah. This last year, they updated, um, the computer components that they had to service because we have so many different needs now. There's some departments that have two computers per position and so they adjusted that a little bit last year, I believe it was last year. But no fiscal changes this year. And then also, if we approve the nine-one-one contract, um, they'd like to hire a part-time person. And so then he, they will have him come and shadow our current in-house person. So they'll be familiar with how things go here and they can have, um, two people that can respond. So if the primary person's out of town, the duplicate person can come in and get it done easily. And that won't cost us more, but that cost is included with the nine-one-one contract.
Okay. I have, uh, I have a little bit of heartburn with section eight on page four on the termination. Failure by either party to fulfill this obligation under this contract is a basis for termination of the contract for cause, nothing necessarily there that I have a problem with, except for either party may terminate the contract for cause immediately if the contractual failure is not corrected within thirty days or receipt for written notice of the failure. It's not so much what is written there, it's what's not, is written there. So basically, we have to be able to cite a contractual failure in order to terminate this. There is no, um, element within this contract that allows us to terminate at will. Or if we would like to go a different direction or change this contract in the future. There's no room within the language of this contract to give notice and say, hey, we'd like to go somewhere else. It's, it's, it's down to a he said, she said, you know, opinion pieces on whether or not, um, an, uh, an element of this contract isn't being fulfilled or not. And I don't know if I'm geared for that.
What about number seven?
The terms of the agreement. Okay, either party may cancel this here. Without cause, alright, well, then I take a little bit of that back.
That's a six-month notice.
Six-month written notice, wow, that's pretty hefty.
Well, I think that protects the county too. Cause if we have to go out and, and fight somebody, it could be difficult.
Oh sure, absolutely. If both parties mutually agree, there can be a thirty-day termination in contract. Okay, I, I guess where I was looking for was, I was, I, I would expect that language to be under termination, but, uh, I guess it fits there.
I'm sure Mr. Brown would consider any kind of amendments that we suggest. To events that are easier and comfortable.
Alright.
So between seven and eight, you feel you're covered?
Yeah, with seven there, I feel a lot better. You know, I was really just looking for the termination clause.
Well, um, I guess my question is, you know, if the county does take over nine-one-one and we have the I T issues that we know we're gonna have there at nine-one-one, really do we need another contract then signed at that time because you're almost like two pieces there? And I'm not sure this contract at a hundred and ten thousand covers nine-one-one.
We either need to amend that or have a separate standalone agreement.
Yeah, and he's prepared a separate agreement in the event that we do take over nine-one-one. And I considered, I know we were trying to do as little as possible in pinch pennies at nine-one-one to make it budget and pencil out. So I considered, well, would it be best to have, just have them on call at their standard rate? But I feel like the first quarter that we take it on, there's gonna be a lot of upgrades that need to happen. That is gonna be time, time expensive for us. So I would like to, if you guys wanna not do like a full contract and just do à la carte after the first quarter, maybe you could do that to save money. But I think it's gonna be a pretty, pretty intensive I T program. Like right now, our sheriff's department uses most of our I T time right now. And you know, probably be similar with that because it's just one of those things that can't be postponed or used to address immediately, but.
Well, we've seen also too what's happened to Curry County here recently. They're basically starting from scratch.
Right.
You know, with scammers and whatnot. Don't wanna be without.
We don't, and so, um, I'm working with Mr. Brown. Because of current county, the state's going to mandate that employees sign in to emails, uh, have an M F A, multi-factor authentication. We just rolled out an M F A for our V P N that C I S or insurance company require. So we'll do something similar, um, we're not sure what program we'll use right now and the state hasn't mandated it yet. But we will, we'll do that and then right now we use, um, Azure backups daily. It would be a few days to recreate a server, we would be down for at least a few days with accent that I wanna change to in July. We won't be down at all, especially for those essential part, um, programs like sheriff and nine-one-one. So, that'll be nice.
Well, I guess, uh, the question we have before us is that do we accept this current agreement or do we, uh, counter offer the nine-one-one offer that ACTEC made? You know, or do an amendment later? Nine-one-one's still up in the air, don't, neither the commissioners nor the town council has approved transfer nine-one-one to the county. Obviously, we're in discussions, but no decisions have been made. I guess, uh, an amendment is fine, you know, but just know that it does not include nine-one-one. And we currently do not have nine-one-one, so.
Yeah. And I, I'm fine with this staying where it is, but, uh, I think it would be worth questioning some of the current draft of the nine-one-one contract that was sent to us or wasn't sent to us? I thought we reviewed the, the draft that Mr. Brown had made that.
Oh, yeah, no, that was the final.
That was the final?
And I think you could negotiate, uh, I would negotiate the travel because right now our I T person that's in-house has to go to Christmas Valley occasionally, um, but he shouldn't have to travel for that. So, I mean, that's only a thousand dollar savings, but.
Right. Because it's here, it's just downtown. Okay. Yeah, unless they can justify why there would need to be that much travel, but yeah, I think that still needs to be looked at, more work to be done. But as far as this one's concerned, I mean, I, I'm okay with it. I do think that we need to, it just needs to be constantly on our radar for looking at other options for I T. Still aren't super happy with it, you know, I mean, but we'll leave it with this for now.
Any other discussion on that? Ms. Lozley, transit or F Qs?
Yeah, so this is fun, huh? ODOT has hired a person to do procurement for vehicles for them because there is such a high standard with federal funds that they pass down to ODOT, they have to follow the M T A standards. And there have been a lot of errors with procurement. So now they have a procurement specialist to help counties that don't have procurement specialists. And I have been working with the procurement specialist because they just authorized our grant for vehicles or fully executed it. And so, um, we've been working together to start that process and she would like you guys to approve these R F Qs. We're, we're interested in buying a rear entry and a side entry van. And these are category E, so they're the smaller mini van kind of style or cargo van style vehicles. And I also amended, amended it so it's not only, um, a hybrid, because we couldn't afford a hybrid, they're very, very. Because we couldn't afford a hybrid, they're very, very expensive.
Right. So do you have a list of potential vendors to send these RFQs to?
Yep, there are certified vendors in Oregon that they will be sent to.
Okay.
And the woman in charge of that will, will send them out.
Sounds good. Good?
Yeah, so I'm excited to learn from her and see what she brings, and maybe we can apply procurement to her too.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Oh, no questions.
Alright. Should've been right along here. Do we have all the people in the room for the road use agreement? Obsidian?
I think, well-
They're joining us tomorrow officially at ten thirty. I didn't know if you guys had any discussion today on it.
Yeah, we can act on it tomorrow, um, they'll be here then. There weren't really a lot of changes to this, other than taking that language from the actual contract that we had discussed in the previous meeting, and just moving that to exhibit B on the damp, that's page nine of twelve. It's slightly gray at the bottom of the page. And it has to do with the dust abatement, uh, management plan that, uh, EFSEC, um, is requiring them to have their RUA. So it's just basically provided within the exhibit, kinda leaving the rest of our contract alone. So that's not necessarily something that has to be included in every, um, RUA going forward. We can address it on the means.
So this dust abatement management plan is just for this project?
Correct. Yeah, everything within exhibit B is just for this, um, project. And I do foresee, just as a side note, there was, if I can find it here. Most of the other changes that were made to the document were capitalizations and correcting capitalizations that didn't need to be there. Uh, they were suggested by the attorney, uh, for Obsidian, and I, I'll, I'll take that. You know, I mean, yeah, just a little bit of grammar check.
Other than that though, this is as we reviewed it in our last ten minutes we brought before us?
Pretty much, I'm gonna pull this up on my phone and, and see if I can find. So, um, the other thing that I would just point out here is that the, I would anticipate that this document should be amended in the future. Especially with our conversation tomorrow, uh, potentially earlier in the next few weeks with ODO on the site certificate. If they're going to change an, uh, location for their substation and gentile line, um, that's going to potentially change access to their site also. So there could potentially be impact to other roads, um, that are not within this. And I think it's just gonna be one of those things that we, we have to address over time. Or decide, look, we're getting a really great deal on upgrading these roads. We can take a little bit of impact over here. Uh, we still maintain the responsibility to take care of these roads for the public regardless. If we, but I do think that regardless, we, we still need to at least update the traffic route and where that construction route is going to be. And that's going to change periodically with the, um, with the changes to their site certificate and so forth.
Okay. Mr. Hawke, did you have any issues?
No. I'm-
You say that confidently. He likes it as it is. I've heard him say that in this, oh, it was basically-
Yes, and no, uh, Mr. Hawke at times, um, doesn't, doesn't wanna deal with this at, at all. He'd prefer there not to be a solar development. But, um, I can't not see the impact on his roads. Uh, he's very protective, as appropriately, of the assets that he is working very hard to preserve. So at some point though, we need to just move forward.
Well, we've got exhibit D. Exhibit C as well. Road upgrade.
Correct, and going over this, just for the public's input, um, or the public's, uh, information. For road segment one, we're looking at the developer reimbursing the county for up to twenty-five percent of the cost to chip and seal the project, um, for those road upgrades. And for road segment two, the developer is, will be reimbursing the county for up to eighty percent of the cost of reclamation, chipping and sealing that portion of road. That was something that the developer actually suggested. They said that they would be willing to do that, and I feel like that is an incredible deal for us. We've never had a RUA like this before. And being able to mitigate and decrease our costs on these stretches of road going forward is phenomenal.
Yeah.
So it's a good way to just capture some of that revenue loss that we've had and over time.
We know it's a cheap deal.
Alright, absolutely, so eighty percent. I, I like the idea of doing percentages rather than just a fixed dollar amount, because exactly at that point, it's always going to be cheaper to work on a road today than it will be tomorrow. And by keeping it to a percentage, we can stay within, um, you know, something that we, we feel like is fair based on the increase in cost to the roads and, and construction. So it's just, overall, it's a good deal, I'm very happy with it, and I think it's gonna do us good going on. There was something else that changed there, I will get notes, um, get my notes out for tomorrow's discussion before we take action, so we can talk about that then too. And the attorneys for Obsidian will be present.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion on that? We've got, timed item in about two and a half minutes, we'll honor that. Is there any other things on there that, or list that?
AOC dues?
Have a two minute discussion.
AOC dues, I don't know.
Yeah, or ESG.
Let's just talk about AOC dues, we don't have to, um, finish the discussion when we can at least start it. So, um, Ms. Lousley, do you mind presenting us the, what has been, uh, sent to us for a bill for AOC dues? What we paid in the past?
So, they, I received the invoice dues, and the total amount is twelve thousand, ten dollars and forty-two cents for this upcoming fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we paid sixteen thousand, four hundred, sixty-two dollars and five cents.
Sixteen thousand, say that one more time?
Sixteen thousand, four hundred, sixty-two point four five.
Okay. So rarely do we see a decrease in dues.
Yeah, actually, I budgeted about five thousand dollars more, because I was anticipating them to go up. So this was a pleasant surprise.
And Christian Williams, do you have any insight as to why we have less dues?
Do you care to divulge? It'll take longer than two minutes, but it's based on the allocation and the restructuring of the formula, which is what caused Washington County and some of the other counties to have a great deal of frustration with the dues, because they ended up paying a little bit more based on their size. Some of the smaller counties were alleviated of some of the burden, um, of paying, uh, significant dues amounts. So, obviously, they weren't very happy with it, this was a good deal for us. They wanna have the conversation again. We, I, I did, I, I, I don't know if it would be appropriate, maybe we can continue this discussion later, but maybe in consideration, paying, you know, something between what we paid last year and this amount, we could actually pay more than this amount if we wanted to in our dues. And maybe it would give me some bartering chips and, um, at the table in negotiations with some of the larger metro counties in the future too. And just showing that we're willing to carry our weight and pay our share regardless. So, and, and being that we budgeted five thousand dollars more than we had paid last year too, I, I think we're still gonna come out ahead, but, uh, just something to think about.
Okay. Alright, let's, um, continue this discussion then on AOC dues, because it is now after ten o'clock.
No rush.
And, um, our county attorney Paige Solly is online. Thank you Paige for coming online today, it is now ten o'clock. We have a timed item to discuss Fort Rock Highway Safety Sign Project. In particular, the corner for, uh, Parks Corner. How do we wanna kick this off?
Well, excuse me, I, um, probably should go ahead and fill you in on the conversation I had with Mike Root this morning, Mr. Parks's attorney. Excuse me, so that you've got, um, that, that context. I, Mr., I notified Mike of this, uh, this, this meeting today, I only did it yesterday, I, it was an oversight, I meant to do it after our executive session last week, and it, it slipped off my radar. Uh, he emailed me this morning, concerned about that and with several questions, so I just went ahead and gave him a call, uh, so that I could, could, um, fill, fill in the gaps there. I, he wanted to know the exemption for the executive session, I told him what it was. He, uh, was concerned that neither he nor his client would have the opportunity to present commentary today. I expressed to him that I didn't know that you were going to be taking commentary today. Uh, that, uh, given the posture of, of the case and their response, that I didn't know that there was a lot of additional room for discussion, and that we certainly are fully apprised of Mr. Parks's position on this in terms of, uh, what he believes the facts are, and, uh, the outcome that he would like the, the county to, 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 I, I adopted in this matter. I also gave him the opportunity of, I told him, I, you know, given my oversight, I would be happy to ask you folks to table this for another, another date, that they could be present. He indicated that that wasn't necessary. So that's, uh, and he wanted to confirm that I had forwarded to you his letter and the, uh, statement from Mr. Kerr that had been, uh, notarized. Uh, and I advised him, I forwarded that the day that it came into me. So therein lies the context, uh, we talked a little bit about, well, you know, where, where, where we're at in terms of discussions, I pointed out to you, you know, you guys just did not, you know, rejected our offer out of hand without any indication that you were going to counter, uh, that there was additional room for discussion, uh, that there was some other resolution that you wish to investigate other than what Mr. Parks has made clear, which is, he wants us to fix the guardrail and maintain it in perpetuity, or in the alternative, pay to move as well. We had some discussion about why we can't just repair the, the well, uh, repair the, the guardrail. I expressed to him that, you know, Mr. Hawke had indicated, the current guardrail is not constructed to industry standards. Uh, and as a result, we can't just repair something we know that isn't right to begin with. As you've, as you're aware, Mr. Parks doesn't agree with that, he has provided some statements from some third, third parties, um, who've indicated they believe that this could absolutely happen, that we could go ahead and repair that. I, I don't, I still don't believe that we can rely, rely on that. Because we have no idea what those folks were actually, actually advised in terms of the, the guardrail. They certainly didn't get our opinion, uh, before offering, uh, their, their input. And of course, the bottom line is, is they have no skin in this game, they're, they have no, um, they'll be, bear no responsibility, um, if the outcome is, uh, results in exposure for the county. So that's where we're at on, on this today. My position has not changed, I don't believe that there is a middle ground. Uh, they, they can, can be worked out here. Uh, Mr. Parks is, is pretty, uh, uh, he is pretty confident in his position that the, the county is obligated to just go ahead and, and repair the guardrail and, and keep it in place. With that, I'll, uh, you know, I'm available to answer any questions, uh, and, and fill in, in more detail if necessary.
Alright, um, just so people know and for the record, you know, this discussion began in January at our Christmas Valley meeting, Mr. Parks gave a public comment. And then since then, we've had, uh, lots of discussion, uh, trying to find a resolution to this. You had to do a lot of research and, you know, did a lot of cost estimates, things like that. Just, just so people know, we're talking about, um, commissioners meeting from May seventeenth of nineteen ninety-five. Then the commissioners were Jeremiah O'Leary, Robert Purdue, Robert Purdue, and Jane O'Keefe. Um, the discussion, um, had to do with then, uh, road crew manager, Mr. Callahan, uh, talking about guardrail. And, uh, Mr. O'Leary says he went out there twice, the people that ran into the panel were going west on the road. Why not put in a few barricades, barricades around the panel? I still don't think the county's responsibility to do that. That was Mr. O'Leary's quote. Callahan, the land that the pump is, is on itself is on private land, easement is on both sides of it. He was requesting guardrail all around the turn, which in nineteen ninety-five was twenty-five dollars a foot for guardrail. Mr. Purdue said, I'm in favor of putting some kind of barricade at the well site, just to protect the pump. Again, a barricade at the well site, just to protect the pump. If we put the guardrail up coming south, that would protect it, I think, one section right at the well would be enough. Keefe felt that it was a reasonable compromise, the motion was made by Purdue to authorize the department install a barricade at Parks Well, with seconded by O'Keefe, motion carried. That is what we have to work on, and at no point did it ever say guardrail. There was discussion of guardrail as a barricade, but never, uh, the motion was not made that, uh, to produce guardrail.
Right.
And I don't think it was the commissioners in nineteen ninety-five intent to have it be everlasting for all future commissioners, um, to have to protect an asset of Mr. Parks's.
Well, that, that vote was not supported by, it did not have unanimous support.
Two to one.
Yeah, Jeremiah O'Leary still was against it.
Um, we have talked with Mr. Parks about potential solutions, uh, both he and his attorney have determined that, um, a well would be cost prohibitive to the county. The guardrail that's currently in place is not built to standard, it is damaged on both ends from, um, hits, it doesn't have the correct, uh, crash ends on them that you now see on today's standardized, uh, guardrails. And to meet the standard, it may need to go beyond the, uh, the corner. And to meet the standard, it may need to go beyond the uh the corner um to, just to satisfy the needs of what a guardrail is supposed to do. Um so so the actual access to um the Poplar Ranch and and the neighbor's ranch may potentially be compromised just to build the proper guardrail. We've looked into the cost of guardrail and what did we hear? Something in excess of seventy thousand dollars. And if we were to replace the guardrail and then the guardrail gets damaged again, guess what?
It's another seventy thousand or more?
Yeah, we're back on the hook again to repair and replace. To make it back, come back up to standard.
And it's, and and it would be for the purposes of protecting a private asset that is outside of the county right of way. Which is not a practice that the county maintains anywhere else in the county, to my knowledge.
Mr. Parks does own the uh a piece of private on the outside of the curve where the well sits, and it is point one three five acres. Pretty small. We have offered to him um a compromise of a barricade that would go, talking about crash barrels, um that would go on his property to protect the well. He has rejected that offer. Paige, am I missing anything?
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I'd also like to note that we had the survey, the all of the corners surveyed by an engineer.
Correct.
And he did not deem that any of the corners required any kind of guardrail, only safety signs.
Although I can read that for you too.
And all those corners are the same?
Mm-hmm.
Current roadside protection on the Poplar's Corner is a W-beam system with wood posts and blocking. The existing guardrail does not have proper end treatment. Uh as there is blunt end to the rail with no flare. This creates danger for traveling vehicles as well as more damage to the guardrail when struck. The other two corners do not have existing roadside protection. So we were comparing other corners. They're all generally ninety-three corners.
Right.
None of the other ones have guardrail. It is recommended to improve the existing roadside protection and overall corner safety in that area. Chosen solutions um shall be incorporated on all corners in the area to ensure an equal level of safety. This can be accomplished through the following options. Again, this is according to Anderson Engineering Survey, who did the, did the survey. Solutions can be used separately or in conjunction to achieve the same goal. Option one, installing new guardrails constructed to existing standards. May be expensive and difficult due to access roads limiting the transition rail terminations. This is probably not warranted based on the low average daily traffic, but may be installed with Lake County Road Department desires. Number two, the use of additional signage or high-definition lighting to the reduced speed signs to draw vehicle operators' attention prior to the corners. The additional signage is to provide, to improve the safety of the corners by gaining drivers' attention several times before reaching the corner. And they provided a sketch showing sign placement. Number three, do nothing. There is no requirement to fix or improve the existing road protection. However, we feel improvements should be made for general safety of the traveling public. Okay, and then and then uh again sketches were made of where those sign placements would be made. All right, um we've talked about this several times. I think we're at a point where um we're ready, I'm ready to make a decision.
I am.
About you, Commissioner.
I am.
Would you like to make a motion or would you like me to? I don't know if I formulated one.
Yeah, I haven't either. I was just trying to formulate one in my head. Um we can have discussion about the motion if there's anything that I leave out. I would go ahead and make a motion that we move forward with the removal of the current guardrail from structure and place the signs that were recommended in place. And is there anything else within that motion that we should consider? I'll just leave that motion there.
Yeah, um. I think that's good. I'll second your motion.
Okay.
I guess my only, my only discussion was is that you know, the emphasis is on signs and the more signage, you know, we have there matching the other corners, um again, we're talking about traffic safety and the safety of the public. So the intent there is that we improve the signs. By removing the guardrail, we're also reducing the risk of somebody hitting the guardrail that is currently existing.
Yeah.
And causing uh potential litigation in the future.
Right, right. Which we know is already substandard and has been struck, but on those edges. So just to clarify, it would be to remove the current structure, guardrail structure that is in place at the moment and to move forward with the placement of the recommended signage. The only other um discussion I would add is we had had debate over whether or not we would provide crash barrels to protect the well, a one-time deal to provide that to the landowner there to protect his wellhead. That has been rejected, as you've stated. And we cannot force or move forward with any other protection on a private property unless the landowner consents to it. So being that he has refused it, there, there's not a thing that we can do.
No counteroffers been made.
Correct.
Okay. Can't think of anything else.
Paige, can you think of anything that we should consider in addition to that? I just feel.
No. No, I mean ultimately, when it comes down to it, it's a, I mean, it, the the actual action itself is is fairly straightforward. It's just the the context that lead up to it.
Right. It, my motion almost sounds a little too simple for this subject that has dragged out for nearly a year. Um for me at least, because it's been going on for a long time, so, all right.
Um. And I guess, I just wanna make the point that it is not my intent as a commissioner to have the burden, have the perpetuity for future commissioners um to have to make uh decisions on this as well.
Right.
We're not uh, you know, the motion has not been made to replace the guardrail and then you have to keep the guardrail in place forever and ever.
Right.
You know, back in nineteen ninety-five, they talked about a barricade. We've offered a barricade and Mr. Parks has rejected it.
Right. And I think that was a one, I think the intent of the previous board was a one-time thing also. I don't think they intended us to bear the burden in perpetuity to protect private assets on private property. You know, I I definitely would want to alleviate that kind of precedent from future boards um to have to contend with. Because I don't think that's appropriate or good use of the public's dollars.
Okay, any further discussion? I have none. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of removing the current guardrail uh on Fort Rock Road near Poplar Corner and installing signage uh and speed control signs as uh recommended by Anderson Engineering. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two to zero. No, Mr. Almerson was absent, I guess.
All right.
Okay.
Hi Judy.
Hi. Is that a good time?
Yeah.
All right. Mine should be short and sweet, I think.
Um Paige, anything else? Well, whatever you want.
I, no, I have no- nothing for you folks today.
Okay. Thank you Paige. Appreciate you coming on.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning.
There was a whole bunch of Ps in that sentence. I should have counted them that you said. I would have never been able to say them all.
I'm pretty sure I can't spell that.
I have uh two amendments um today, and I didn't think, didn't know, send them to you. I didn't, I didn't do that. Um one is the environmental health. Um that is their new um the new fees that we get every time it turns around. And it looks like the actual license fee has gone down, but the pool fee looks like it doubled for this time. Went from forty-five dollars to ninety dollars.
Yeah.
For their licensing. Um but then the remittance factor looked like it went from twelve eighty-one down to twelve twenty-two percent. Which I was surprised. I read it twice. And if I'm reading it correctly, that's what it says. So whenever we do licenses, we have to pay the state a certain amount of that to keep the program open, is my understanding. So that's the environmental health amendment that has signatures for you guys today.
And it's for a biennium?
Yes.
And it, and it was always for a biennium, so it has, in fact, doubled in its cost.
Oh, oh, okay.
You know, so it's forty-five
Yeah.
dollars for each license file.
Yeah.
And ID.
Yeah, um so that's the the shorter one. The other amendment that we had on before that one is our um PE fifty-one oh five funding. That's our um modernization funding. Uh when I could have postponed and received that funding next year and not this year, uh we can spend it through two thousand twenty-seven. And it's to help with um retaining um and and getting more staff at Public Health. One of the things I'm using it for currently is I've hired somebody to put all of uh Public Health's policies into policy stats. So it's an electronical system. We've never done that and it's hard to track down policies with staff change. So we've hired somebody with that money that's putting um all our policies into the Lake Health District's policy stat so that moving forward, anybody can step in and get those, which I think is great use of this funding. Uh we'll probably end up using a little bit of funding for um our new building for the um some furnishing, but probably not much, because I got a mini grant for, to cover most of that already.
And when you say new building?
The, the newer building that's gonna be to us. We're gonna move to the um
The workforce building.
Yeah, CO's, was it, uh it's right in between Senior Center and the, yeah. So the plan is, I believe, if I understand correctly, we get to take over on it in June to start the remodeling. And then we, for the grant that we have for uh the building, we need to be in in December.
So you will be moving out of there.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty uh well, we'll see if you get to start working on it in June. It's not that far away.
No, it's not. I think um I think they have, if, they have people lined up to start working on it. I don't think it needs, we already replaced the the roof. And it's just really cosmetic sort of things that need to be done.
Yeah.
Um inside, so I don't think it's gonna be a ton of work. I believe it's not considered a medical clinic, so it doesn't have to have like all the rewiring and that sort of stuff, is my understanding. I could be wrong. That Justin is in charge of that um through the hospitals, working on that. We have the, we've been working with a contractor, um an architect to the designing portion and have that finalized, so that's done. Um and yeah, I'm hoping, you know, you never know how how things move along, especially with construction, but um that's the plan currently.
Okay, and so the current people in there, mental health, right?
Oh, so it's empty.
It's empty.
It's empty. I don't know how long it's been empty. Um there's nobody in there. I went and toured it a few months ago and it was empty.
This is in the workforce building next to Pacific Crest coming this way, not the mental health building, but the one.
It's the ground that we would like, that big? Yeah.
Okay, I was across the street.
Okay, yeah, no, it's empty.
Yeah.
Okay.
So um that, so the funding for the PE fifty-one is is money we're gonna use. And I have it for a few years, so as it, as the time goes on, I'll just pick other projects to use that money for. I don't have plans besides um currently using it on the person I've contracted for my policy uh policy stat work. And um then we're still down a nurse, so recruitment. Francine um gave her notice and retired, so prevention is open. We've interviewed, we sent an offer to somebody for that position. So we'll see if they take it. It's my understanding they will. Um and then we can get that program. It'll just be a quick pause and then I can get it going again.
Okay.
So I let the state know that we didn't wanna pause the program. We were trying to keep it going until we could get somebody into that position. Um and then, just to follow up on, we did, uh we were able to uh purchase some more of the air purifiers and the head filters, quite a few actually. Um we got sixty-five more of the the air filter, uh purifiers and three hundred and thirty-three of the filters. And so we have three different dates. We're gonna go to Northlake, um Paisley, and then Lakeview and divide them up and get those out. And we're using the same guidelines that we did with the last set.
Excellent.
Yeah, so I was excited about that. So that, that, all three of them will be done in June, so that we can get them out there before if we have smoke.
Do you use the same brand?
Yep, the same thing that.
The way the filters work.
Yep, yep. Yeah, so you'll see some, um we'll have some advertisement go out so that people, we have names, but never a phone number, so we can't call people who receive them to say we have more. So we'll start putting it on the radio and in the newspaper whisper and that sort of stuff. I was excited. I think we'll have about twenty of the machines to give to Northlake and twenty for Paisley area and then twenty-five for Lakeview. Last time, if you remember, it was only for Lake County, the Lakeview people, so we wanted to try to spread it out a little.
We did anyway.
Yeah, yeah, like, maybe we did. I wasn't unfortunately involved in that because of COVID. I didn't get to participate. Um and I think that is all that I had on my list. Do you guys have any, any questions for me?
No, not really.
All right, pretty simple today.
Appreciate you coming in and.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I hope such that I get to come up, I don't like to come up with these things. I just wanna listen to all the interesting things that are going on. I miss the bee talk and I was curious what that was about. I just wanna come over and sit and listen to what's going on.
It's all good. The bee wars.
We used to have bees and then um when Tucker left, we don't have bees anymore. Um I miss them. They're fun.
Yeah.
It's all good.
All right, well, thank you kindly for your time. Good to see you.
You too.
Take a break.
All right. Chugging right alone here. Um do you wanna continue AOC dues or?
Um sure, um. I don't know, what are your thoughts on uh on that? Quite honestly, I mean, the way our, the way things have gone for us, I'm inclined at times to just go ahead and take uh take the discount uh and go ahead with the twelve thousand, but um we did budget for quite a significant amount more. Um and it would enable us to potentially have some good conversations with some of the counties who are squawking about what I feel is pretty mediocre. They don't like to pay more, or no one likes to pay more. They argue that they can't sustain it, but we were prepared to. We budgeted for five thousand more than we paid last year in anticipation, because we prioritize it. And that's, that to me is what this conversation has been largely about on AOC dues uh with the other counties, is whether or not you prioritize AOC. And the the Association of Organ Counties for the public's knowledge, we're, we're talking about AOC, the Association of Organ Counties. You know, some people get that confused sometimes. But uh it is a fantastic organization. We are able to come together and discuss issues as counties statewide and advocate for issues that we feel are important to us and advocate against issues that we feel will impact counties greatly. Gives us a good presence there in Salem. We own our own building now, which turned out to uh to save us a significant amount of money. And we no longer have a And we no longer have a, this is another point, we do not have a deficit with our budget that we approved in November. As you remember, there was a lot of contention over the fact that we approved a budget with a deficit. And I, I promised everyone that we would not run with a deficit though, and we will not. That no longer is there. However, we still do have the concern of a structural deficit going forward because we're still very heavily dependent on dues. And with counties not paying their full dues, Washington County has decided to do something very unusual and only pay what they're willing to, which is not allowed within the, you, you can have a portion of your dues forgiven if you can make a case for your county going through a financial crisis. And you can choose not to participate in elements of AOC and not pay for the entirety of the dues. There really aren't a lot of other options that are open. If you don't pay your dues, then you don't get to vote on the committees. We have another county that has chosen not to participate at all, mainly because there is one commissioner that has been upset about wildfire discussions. And so she's chosen to kind of lead the charge against AOC because she's unhappy with where the majority of commissioners in Oregon stand. So it's resulted in a little bit of impact to our budget. But we'll be fine, and we're going to make it through this next year just fine, perfectly. I think if we wanted to pay a little bit more, I don't think I would go above fifteen.
Well. I just did some math on my phone here. Last year we paid sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and five cents. But Melody told us, you know, in our budget cycle this year, we've asked the material and supplies and whatnot to reduce by fifteen percent.
Right.
If you reduce that by fifteen percent, you get thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents. Now, they're asking us for twelve thousand ten dollars and forty-two cents. You know, I think it would be. You know, if we reduce our, what we pay by fifteen percent.
Good thought.
Maybe that would be a good gesture that we're paying above the twelve thousand, but, but we've also reduced county costs to AOC by fifteen percent. Just a thought.
Yeah.
I know that doesn't meet the fifteen thousand.
No, that's fine.
If I reduce that too, you know, I'd be.
Fifteen was just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I thought about that too.
Quite honestly, I'd be happy with a rounded number of thirteen. And just say we pay a flat thirteen thousand. That's easier for me to track in the budget and everything.
Thirteen-five maybe?
Yeah, whatever, whatever you guys want to do. Yeah. And I, I, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Albertson, but there was some discussion about this in the previous board meeting when you were on Cow Camp. And we, we had had that talk, and, and, and we wanted to wait till you could be part of this too.
Do we need to wait again? Or when says due, or we passed due? We are past due, are we?
I would like to pay it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm treacherous, so I don't really care. But no, if, if Melody can go ahead, if we can make a decision on this tomorrow, at least, that would be fantastic.
Okay. Right. We'll make a decision tomorrow.
All right.
Come up with a different proposal. All right. Check that one off. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five ESG certification for KLCAS ratification. Okay, so we got a email from them saying, KLCAS, saying, we need your writing regarding the emergency shelter grant certification from Oregon Housing and Community Services. In order to have access to these funds for rapid rehousing and eviction prevention, we are required to have local government approval from both counties, talking about Clamathan Lake. I have attached an approval document provided by OHC, OHCS that KLCAS will need filled out and sent back no later than May fourteenth.
Is that from Christina Zorah?
Kenzie Bisham.
Kenzie, okay.
Yeah, I. So today's the sixteenth, so we would have missed that deadline.
Well, the, the letter is dated, but on the ninth.
Yeah, so I signed it on the ninth. This is for ratification.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with this. It doesn't necessarily mean that they'll be able to utilize these funds, but as the community action service for both Lake and Clamath, they need to have a thumbs up from each governing body, so.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify the ESG certification, a local government approval for the nonprofit organization receiving the two thousand twenty-three and twenty-five ESG funds, the Clamathan Lake Community Action Service.
And I will second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the ESG, to ratify the ESG certification, a local government approval for nonprofit organization receiving the twenty-three, twenty-five ESG funds through KLCAS. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Question carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Were you talking about this today, Oregon Outback? I guess, you know, I read this again, talking about lighting, you know, trying to reduce unnecessary lighting. We have one of the darkest sky areas in the nation, eastern Lakeview, south Burns. Kind of a big, big black hole here, eastern Lake County, western Harney County, southwest Harney County, et cetera. I know Commissioner Albertson's had some heartache over some of the verbiage with Oregon Outback dark sky. I wasn't here for the last commissioner meeting. Any changes to when they presented?
Um, I, they presented this to us and I reformatted it, and then made very small language changes. And they've approved those.
They being Oregon Outback?
Yep. Our dark skies.
So this meets concerns of Commissioner Albertson?
I would not say that.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that either.
So, but this only affects the county lands, and I think they said the county lands have an inventory of nine lights on the ski hill. And they're already planning to change two of the lights, I think she said.
Yep.
It doesn't have any effect on private land. But I would agree that Commissioner Albertson has heartache over this resolution.
Yeah, and the, the only other lighting that I think that falls within the footprint is the park that we managed in Plush.
Even Plush was.
Union Park and, yeah, Ski Hill. I think where Commissioner Albertson, I want to be careful and mindful, I'm not speaking for him. I think where his heartburn comes from is two things. One, where we, we continually throughout the document, it states sanctuary, referring to the Oregon Outback International Dark Sky Sanctuary. He's concerned about not only the definition of that word, but the additional context that comes along with that and, and how it's used. The other element that is concerning to him is whether or not this resolution or support of things like the light management plan that currently the BLM are using will impact other activities on public land, such as mining operations and, and so forth, and whether or not it could be used in the future as a tool to prohibit some of those activities. I, I maintain through my, my personal opinion is that in order to deal with that concern, you have to engage with the BLM and ensure that they are continuing to abide by the multiple use requirement and that you're not prohibiting these operations. Mining operations, I still see them as temporary, so.
Not aware of any mining.
Well, like, you know, like if someone's out there at the Opal Mines or something like that, you know, per se, maybe they have some lights up within that area.
Trailers.
Right, and some camp trailers or whatnot, but again, those are temporary. We, this resolution, I only see it as addressing the land that Lake County maintains within the footprint, which is Ski Hill, a plush area. I think the concern again from Commissioner Albertson though is whether or not we acquiesce to something that could be far more impactful based upon the, the activities on public land by signing this resolution. I don't know if I necessarily agree with a lot, but I understand his concern very much and I appreciate his, his willingness to, to stand by it. I, I'm not sure I could ever mitigate those concerns, so I'm not sure that anything that we write in this resolution will. I think it's just concerned about the future, which again, I think is something that you have to address through the policies of the BLM and whether or not they're abiding by the multiple use requirements.
Melanie, is there anything time sensitive on this decision?
No, um, they discussed having it approved by June, right? Was it June? When they were hoping to take it to the IDA. I can research that.
Uh, I believe so.
So.
We're assigned to climb the table until our June, first June meeting.
That's fine.
Okay, consensus to table? Okay. Think it deserves Commissioner Albertson an opportunity to speak on it before we make a decision. Okay, I have contracting legal project discussion.
I wouldn't assume that was. Was that Jay?
That's, that's discussing additional work needed to be done, like on county code enforcement.
Oh, okay, all right, gotcha. All right, I'm tracking down. We can have a little bit of discussion on that, I guess. What are our cost savings so far, from past contract with previous legal counsel to utilizing Paige Sully for county council?
We're saving, our monthly grade is on average half of what we were paying previously with our previous contract. But she also does not have the capacity, because of our backlog, she's still trying to catch us up. She has advised Commissioner Albertson to potentially take on pro, outside council, take on additional projects outside of normal county business like code enforcement and updating, updating that project.
Our codes.
Our codes.
Code.
And just like the hearing process, we have someone in, Tim Elliott has agreed to do hearings for code enforcement, but he can't work on our here, our.
Code.
On our code and hearing processes because that would be a conflict of interest.
Right.
And then he's advised to have Miss Sully work on that, but she won't have capacity for quite some time. So we could just keep not enforcing it through the hearing process. And I know there's some departments who would like to start working on it soon. So Commissioner Albertson would like you guys to entertain a contract for all of cart projects like that outside of normal county business.
Do we have anyone in mind? Has, has anyone heard from any other legal counsel practices that might work?
Um, there were a couple people who put in RFPs that I was impressed with, that we could consider.
Okay. Reach out to them maybe and see if they'd be willing to do some of this work. And it would be specifically for adjusting code enforcement element for ordinance, taking a look at our ordinances and bringing them up to standard.
Mm-hmm, right this time. There might be future things that we need.
Okay.
Done that Miss Sully doesn't have capacity for, but.
Is there any capacity within AOC?
No, I do not believe so. It's a good question, but I don't believe so.
We have Jefferson County's process and, and their ordinance that we'd like, like it to be reflective of, I think. I think it'll be a minimal project. It'll be pretty, I think the turning time is expensive, but I think it'll be well worth it if we. Inquire someone, but.
Well, I know like, you know, it's very be used with the railroad. They've also been doing some work for AOC. You know, I just wondered if there was an opportunity there because they're doing some work for AOC. And we have a relationship with them.
We could. I could reach out to Gina Nickel and find out. Yeah, and see if there's any capacity there at least, and maybe inquire about the rates, still what an hourly rate would look like. Because I would anticipate that's what we would consider, the same as we have with Paige Sully. Is she bills in six minute increments, so if, you know, if there's something like that where we can.
Doesn't mean that's what they'll do, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah, something that we can compare with. That may be a possibility as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. I think we need to get moving on it. And you're correct, Paige does not have the capacity for this in addition to the catch-up that we've had her on.
And there's all these.
We keep adding to the list.
All these little fires that keep popping out, you know, and.
And I think, I think it's reasonable, you know, we did have a conversation about this in the past was the idea of having a legal counsel that can address every single one of the subject matters that we encounter as a county is somewhat ridiculous, I suppose. I mean, and, and so much right now, I mean, law is so specialized, I feel like, as well. So code enforcement, updating our codes and ordinances, Paige has been fantastic in so many other realms. But she's even kind of said this isn't her day to day. So we'll just, if we can find some other options out there and have legal counsel do it and utilize some of those cost savings that we've had, that'd be great.
Okay. Do we need a motion or just a consensus? We've got consensus to move forward.
Maybe if you can find out what those rates would be from some of the other folks that have responded to RFPs in the past, and I'll get ahold of Gina and find out if there's any capacity and what rates would be like coming through AOC and evaluate our options from there. Do you want us to, do you want to take on some of that, Melanie, in terms of if we are able to find something and just kind of move forward so we can get moving before our first meeting in June?
Yeah, because I don't think it'll meet any kind of procurement threshold. It'll be very minimal. And maybe for a bigger project in the future, like a litigation or something, that would have to be a board decision, but I don't anticipate this. And I'll get, I'll get a quote on the time they think it'll take them to do this work.
And then maybe in our first meeting, if we are able to come up with something within the next few weeks that's agreeable, that makes sense for the county, if we could move forward with that and maybe ratify any kind of contract or agreement that we have to do in June, but we can maybe get and work on it.
I agree.
We'll keep you posted too.
That'd be great. Time's clicking.
Yep.
All right, any ways on update? All right, any liaisons update you want to give? I assume we've covered all our topics, there's a bunch of them. Checked everything off, didn't I?
Tomorrow we have the ordinance hearing, ordinance fifty-two hearing. And then the RUA. One, one thing I would, was curious, I was going to reach out to ODO today and find out about whether or not they had availability tomorrow, um, to, to speak with us tomorrow afternoon perhaps. But, um, you know, we, we could maybe recess for lunch and then come back in the afternoon and speak with ODO. Obsidian will be available.
ODO is a?
Uh, excuse me, um, Oregon Department of Energy. And it's in regards to the site certificate for Obsidian.
I saw the email.
Yeah. I made sure I CC'd you guys on my questions. I've never been through that process before. I was fully anticipating this and that they would reach out to us in regards to, to the amendments. But I wasn't sure what the process would be, if they speak with each of us individually or they have to hold some sort of a hearing. We won't be making, my understanding is we don't make an actual decision. They're just trying to gather our comments on the actual site certificate amendment. So if there's, because I still believe that they are the approval body for the, the site certificate.
But you guys are the SAG special advisory.
Correct, but I'm not sure if they're just looking for consensus or an actual position or motion that they want to take our comments and, um, gather them appropriately. It's not a hearing though, to my understanding. A special session would be fine if we do it later in the week, uh, where Commissioner Albertson can attend.
We'll hear this week.
Yeah. I, I didn't realize he wasn't going to be in for the day of tomorrow.
All right, I'd like to give a little shout out, congratulations to Christmas Valley Water for, uh, the work that they've done. They recently were, have done, uh, a lot of really good work. As we know, they're putting in new pipe and whatnot up there to improve their water system. And, um, they recently were letting known by EPA that they got an award.
Yep.
Uh, for their good work, efficiency and everything that goes along with that. So I know Mr. Strong is online there, but, uh, just wanted to put a shout out and congratulations for Erica Anderson and the board and all the folks involved up there of all the hard work that they're doing to try to improve that water system. It's been recognized locally and now even by EPA, so.
Yep.
That is an awesome compliment and a great, uh, gesture towards trying to do good work.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to being able to leverage more dollars in the future and keep them coming because they've just, I mean, not only the contractor that they've got, but just, they have really just hammered this project out, hooked up new homes and everything, new lines. And, uh, the community is pretty happy about it.
We gotta keep, uh, pushing for dollars and they're showing that they are very good at implementing and getting the, getting it done very cost effectively. And so I know that I'll keep pushing for more money.
Absolutely.
Eventually get to that finish line, which is still out there ways, but, um, boy, we're, we're making some good headway.
Yes.
I think that's really great.
Alrighty, um, don't really have any other liaison updates at the moment, um, not that are coming to mind anyway.
North Lakeview Water Project is moving right along. Um, people who come into Lakeview on three ninety-five north, uh, just north of town, seeing the activity there. I'm getting weekly, uh, reports. You know, Anderson Engineering does all the, um, evaluating and whatnot. They've got an engineer on site who's, uh, making sure everything's done correctly. Daryl Anderson is looking into, um, the homes that are past industrial way towards, um, LDS Church.
Okay.
Go ahead, he's looking at what the cost would be to go ahead and, um, have pipes that come up to the house. Doesn't necessarily mean they would have to hook up. They don't have to hook up. One of those residents has asked for hookup for both water and sewer. But just seeing what the cost is to go ahead and implement it now. So that if they do decide to do it in the future, uh, that installation pipework has already been completed. Certainly a lot cheaper at this time than would be in the future. So he hasn't got back to me on what that would be, but he thinks it might be minimal. Anyway. It's good. Lakeview RNG is in town. They're having a public, uh, thing Thursday evening at the Oaks. And, uh, interested in talking to them.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing at the moment. I might have some more tomorrow.
Okay. We missed anything? Don't know. All right.
Sounds pretty cool.
It is ten fifty-six and we'll adjourn our works.